I'd like to call this public hearing into order today. Are we doing the public hearing first? Yeah, we're doing the public hearing first. A public hearing to hear zoning case 2023-01-MA. Ms. Hugh Cutter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This staff report is for case 2023-01-MA. It's a major adjustment to a double O planned office, PUD. The applicant is David Froelicker on behalf of Dr. Michael Hall, who's a dentist. The subject property is 8810 Montgomery Road and its proposed medical office. For the proposal, this is a proposed major adjustment to the subject property at 8810 Montgomery Road. At 8810, the applicant proposes a one-story craftsman-style medical office building for the current use of a dentist. The main first floor is proposed to be 3,329 square feet. Compared to the approved 4,434-square-foot office building approved in case 2018-13-MA, this proposed medical office building provides approximately 33% less office floor space, or it's less of 1,105 square feet. From case 2018-13-MA, the neighboring building is 22 feet tall. With a front setback of 116.25 feet from the Montgomery Road right-of-way, the proposed building shown above is consistent with the scale of the Montgomery Road corridor as it has a reasonable peak height of 24 feet 4 inches. There was a -- this height was revised recently from just over 25 feet tall. Dr. Hall provided the revised building elevations on March 6, 2023, and this just accounted for some reduced massing in the kind of the roof area. All setbacks meet the office district requirements as noted below, and it will get to on page two. Nearby history suggests that nearby past buildings with roof massing taller than one story and like what is proposed have been approved by Sycamore Township in the past, but ultimately not built. There are two covered areas that aren't included in the overall first-floor square footage. Up front, there's a 306-square-foot covered porch area, and in the back, there's a 350 square-foot rear cover deck. For parking, there are six subterranean parking spaces proposed underneath the building and 14 surface parking spaces proposed, for a total of 20. The current zoning as mentioned is double O planned or planned office district. To the north and to the south, you have a double O planned office district. To the east, you have a single-family residential behind the proposed dentist's office. And then to the west, you have double E planned retail district, and of course, the W double D planned multifamily residential. For the size, it's a little over half an acre at .55 acres, about 79 feet, affronted on Montgomery Road. The proposed ISR is .559, which is very similar to the last case in 2018. The topography, it slopes to the east and south. Current ISR is it's zero, it's vacant property. As for the history, I won't get into everything, but I just note the kind of the scale and the of the building that was approved in 2018. I would also note in 2014 and in 2008, similar-sized office buildings were proposed, but ultimately not built. As for the land use plan, the Sycamore Township land use plan indicates a proposed office land use consistent with the case's proposed land use. And I printed out the sheet that's in front of you. And more definition, it's in the Montgomery Road central planning area. And the vision for this area, just reading verbatim, is based on surrounding land use patterns as one of low-density office, which this would be. As for parking, a parking lot, the parking lot site arrangement required, there are 17 spaces required, they showed 20. The ingress and egress of the subject property are shared with the neighboring property 8812, which is kind of the sister property to the north. And the access drive is generally consistent with the previous case, 2018-13-MA. The proposed lot is sufficient. I would note that there is a Duke utility pole currently on the site, and theoretically it could stay, but two of the parking spaces would have to go. But I understand that Dr. Hall would like to move the utility pole, and we got him connected with the Duke folks, you know, to look at that. As for an accessory structure allowed by right in the O district, although a dumpster enclosure is not proposed at this time, a future dumpster, potential dumpster enclosure location is shown on the plan. The required side yard setbacks for that is 10 feet for dumpster enclosure. So as that's not met, Dr. Hall has agreed that to remove the note from the plan, so no future dumpster enclosure is planned. As for building materials, the plan calls for high-quality building materials, no changes are recommended. As for lighting, a photometric plan showing four wall packs and parking lot lighting complies with the Sycamore Township zoning resolution. For permanent signs, the applicant proposes signage consistent with the standards set forth by the O zoning district. For landscape and buffer yards, the landscape plan complies with the Sycamore Township zoning resolution. One other note, there are some grading and some erosion concerns have been brought up, been brought up, especially in kind of the Montgomery Road side of the development. And it's kind of outside the scope of zoning a little bit, but there is a property maintenance code that requires, you know, adequate drainage, and of course, the county would regulate that. But the neighbor to the south, Mr. Bonaventura, there's, I guess, there's kind of a, there's kind of literally a swale that's been dug out, and Mr. Bonaventura has mentioned that the water from Montgomery Road splits the subject property and the property to the south. And then Mr. Bonaventura mentioned that, hey, the solution probably is to put in curb, you know, of course, ODOT would have to issue a permit for that. And Mr. Bonaventura has mentioned that if curb went in up to his property line, he would look at putting in curb too. So I've been talking to Mr. Froelicker, who's the civil engineer. He agreed that that's the way to go. Currently, if you go all the way up Montgomery Road, you know, in the direction of Mallory, there's curb on that side of the road, so. As for outside agency comments, on this one, there wasn't a lot that came back. In the rear of the property, we'll get to on the next page, a resident did have some concern about some grading and drainage, and I think, as Mr. Froelicker would mention, and I think it's common, the county would review that to ensure that drains correctly. As for the curbing that would be required, we would, you know, they would have to apply for ODOT permitting for that. I'm going to say I'll just comment on some feedback from a resident, Mr. John Masali in the VA Residence District behind. He notes the height, and talking to him since then, he seemed to think that the height of the building was just fine. In terms of the lighting that remains on 24 hours a day, the zoning commission recommended a condition to require motion sensor light fixture at the rear of the building, and that was included as a condition in their commission case, and that's included tonight, too. Lastly, this was the comment that Mr. Masali mentioned about some of the grading in the back related to, you know, some, perhaps some extra excess fill dirt and some draining challenges, and I would probably yield to the applicant to talk about, you know, their efforts to mitigate any drainage issues. So with that, that is all I have.
Very good. Is there anybody here from the applicant that would like to speak this evening? Great, I'm going to let Katie, and if there's anybody else here this evening that's planning to speak, I'm going to take this opportunity to let Katie swear you in.
Can you guys, if you're going to speak, please rise. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question, Mr. Cutter? You mentioned the dumpster enclosure may come later, and this may be a question for the applicant, but is there a dumpster on the plan currently that would not be enclosed?
There's currently no dumpster provided. That was kind of like a future planning, like, hey, you know, what if a new user comes in 10 years from now and, you know, needs a dumpster? There's one on the plan, but in looking at the code, there's a 10-foot setback requirement. I heard one resident had, was concerned about the dumpster. Dr. Hall did not want a dumpster, so we're like, you know, if someone wants a dumpster in the future, they can come back.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. And if you could do us a favor and state your name and your address for the record, that would be helpful, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Hi, my name's Michael Hall. My address is 9841 Forest Glen Drive in Montgomery. I am the applicant, so I just wanted to introduce myself and first off, say thanks for the opportunity to present our application here. And just wanted to share a few words that I shared in the zoning commission just regarding my interest in the property, and then answer any questions you may have. I was excited at the opportunity to build at this site for a couple of reasons. One, Sycamore is my home, so I grew up in the Blue Ash area, just a few miles up the road, and so, and live still in the Sycamore area, and so an opportunity to put down roofs close to home was particularly attractive to me. And it's also close to where my practice currently operates. So as our practice has continued to grow, we're looking for some space to expand a little bit, and this is maybe a quarter-mile down the road from where we currently operate, so it'd be a really convenient relocation for our patient base. So, you know, as far as our interests, our goals in setting out, coming up with a design, I really wanted to build something that we felt like met the look and the quality of the area. And so, I think, appreciate the high standards that Sycamore Township has for things that go in here, and really wanted something that kind of went with the residential look of that area where we're looking to build. And I wanted to build something that we felt was attractive, handsome, would look contemporary and nice for a long time. So as far as some of the other comments, yes, as Jeff pointed out, I have no interest in a dumpster, so that's a concern, you can just wipe that off. That was maybe just in case somebody needed that in the future. As far as the grading, yeah, I think Jeff, the builder, would be looking to do whatever's reasonable there to make sure the grading is flowing correctly, so that's not a point of contention on our side. So, yeah, I think beyond that, the utility pole, the electricity pole, it is something we would like to move. I think we've started the process. I think communication with Duke has been a little bit slow from what I understand, but yes, that is something we like to do. So, yeah, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer as best I can, or Jeff maybe you'll answer better than me.
Go ahead, Tom.
I don't know that I have any right now.
I do. How many dentists will be in there? Will you be just the only dentist?
For now, just one, yeah, just me. I'm the only dentist in the practice, so.
Is it possible that this might expand to multiple dentists?
Possible, yeah. We, what's proposed, I'm currently operating, I have a five-chair, a five-opertory space, and what we've proposed to build initially would be a six-chair space. That would just be enough room for me to continue to work as I've been working. But there's space that we could outfit a seventh or an eighth opertory if we continued to grow, and I was to bring on an associate. I don't foresee that anytime soon, but that's just to allow for the potential future growth for me or any future buyer that may come alongside.
Okay. As it relates to the refuse, how do you handle that? You just, in trash cans?
Currently, yes, yeah, that's our plan, it's just.
So you don't, you don't, you're not producing so much that you can't use trash cans to make that work?
Oh, no, yeah, no, no.
Okay. That's all I have.
Good.
I guess that does leave another question. You will have some medical waste, I suppose, from the, is it just going in the ordinary trash can also? Is there a special?
Yeah, there's code for that. Some stuff has to be disposed in a very specific way, it can't just go in general waste. Other stuff can, so, yeah, that wouldn't be any different than how we operate currently. The stuff that needs to be disposed of in a different way is, that's shipped out in a different way, wouldn't even go through the trash collection at all.
Is there a landscaping plan for the rear of it? I know Mr. Masali, sounds like he is relatively in favor of this, we'll hear from him if he speaks.
Yes, I have to admit, I am, I know very little about landscaping, the specifics of the plants, but, but yes, I understand that we've proposed to have, Jeff, you would probably be able to speak more intelligently about this than I can, but, but yes, there is a rear landscaping plan with the goal to provide some visual blockage there, both for the residents behind and for us as well.
If I might, the landscape plan mirrors the plan that was approved in 2018 in terms of quantity in plants and types of plants, so it complies with the zoning resolution. And it will sufficiently screen once it grows up.
I asked, because I had understood some of the neighbors had concerns after the adjacent building went up, that a lot of light was still spilling through, at least initially, possibly some noise also, so we all want to be good neighbors.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
We set up the land use plan in that area specifically for this kind of structure, though, that was a transition basically between residences.
Yeah.
But not full on office.
Yeah. A couple of thoughts to that point. I mean, my office hours are 7:30 to 4:30, and I don't have any interest in working any later than that. And I think one of the things, Jeff, I can't remember if you mentioned it just in your introduction there, but I think the zoning commission recommended that the rear lighting that is to stay on normally all the time, I think they were recommending that to be light activated, or motion activated, excuse me. So if that helps mitigate those concerns.
On the lighting, we didn't have any spillage on this, did we?
I'll pull it up. So there is a little spillage, I'll show you where here. So there's a little spillage right here between the two buildings. It's on, right at the front, it's 1.2, but that's a shared drive in between the two buildings.
Okay.
So there's another commercial, so that's probably fine, but as you get to the, as you get to the residential in the back, back here, it's all zeros.
The area lights on the lower right of the lighting assortment, those will be aimed downward, I assume, not angled outward. Is that part of the plan?
Which lights are you referring to?
Of the four light models shown on the lower left of this, the one on the lower right, the ILP area light.
Oh, yeah, that's on the parking lot in the middle aisle pointing down, as I understand it, yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any other questions?
Doc, where's your office right now? You said it's quarter-mile.
I may be wrong about that, but roughly, yeah, not too far away. Right, the red brick building that's on the west side of Montgomery Road, right by the roundabout.
At Kennedy Lane there?
Yes, yeah, very good, yeah, in there. Dr. Lang's in one of those in there, so we've been in there for a long time.
He was mine working on it.
Dr. Lang.
Yeah.
I think we all sent kids to him somewhere along the way.
His dad's been around a long time.
His dad just moved to Florida.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, appreciate that, thank you. Anybody else here that would like to speak? Mr. Masali?
Yeah.
And again, if you could, when you get up here, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm John Masali, 8829 Linkris, behind the proposed property. I just have a couple of concerns, because, you know, I've been through this whole thing on all these several modifications to the PUD, and I know one thing that has happened in the prior cases, both the learning center and the other dentist's offices, we specifically said no dumpster. And in a PUD, the zoning goes forever, so I would appreciate if that was inserted, just like the other two. And then I'm just concerned, I just, you know, when the learning center was developed, all the extras spoiled from excavating that underground garage got wasted on the site, and the grades changed. What's there now is not what was there before the learning center project, and that grade has been elevated five feet or so from where it was before. And now, now it actually tilts down to my yard, where before, if I can, before, if we went to this existing catch basin, this was always here, this was the drainage, and this whole property, everything swelled to here. Now, this is all built up, so I get flow back this way. Now, I personally dug a little relief ditch here to make sure I don't get flooded, but I would like that to be done a little better, a little more professionally, because these changes in grades were never anticipated, they just happened non-permitted. And then the other, the other concern I have is the under-garage lights in this building are very bright LEDs, and they never go off. And I don't think that was the intention, you know, I know you have to have security lighting, but I would think those should have been on a switch or a trip or a timer that when the building's not in use, those lights would be off. And I would like to have that, at least in this building, because that's bright light that's shot, that's always on, and I really don't think you intended that to be, but it got overlooked. So, you know, when the building's not in use and you got them on timer, that would be great, because, you know, like I said, things happen, just like, just like on the other dental office, you know, we sat in here, you guys voted and established a grade for the finished floor, but when the resolution got written, there was a two-foot mistake, and now that building is two foot taller than it was supposed to be. And there were specific trees that were supposed to go in there, and they ended up being smaller, because when you get to the pressures of signing off on the thing in order to get a C of O for them to get their final thing, I kind of lose out at the end. I just don't want that to happen again. I want to at least be assured that.
So the lights you were suggesting are on the north side of the building?
No, no, the underside parking lights.
Oh, I got you, I got you, okay.
The underside of the garage is lit 24 hours a day brightly. And they don't, they close at 5 o'clock. They don't tutor at night, and there's really no, you know, I can understand a safety light or a night light being on in the event somebody does come in, but I don't think the full, the full underside of the building needs to be lit.
Dr. Hall, is there a reason for that being lit 24 hours a day?
I'll address that.
Yeah.
My name's Dave Froelicker, general contractor. And the reason why there's.
Can you say that again, I'm sorry?
Dave Froelicker, general contractor. I'm also a structural engineer by trade, professional engineer. So the code's very clear, and the egress lighting has to be on 24 hours, seven days a week. In his existing building upstairs, he has stairs to go upstairs, so there has to be a light that has to be on all the time. That's code, very clear. You, as a trustee, you have the ability to vote that for us to put that on a timer, okay? If you want us to put it on a timer and/or a motion sensor, it's fine, I don't care. Now, there has to be some kind of, you know, Dr. Hall, I don't care, but there has some kind of coordination, something you write up to Hamilton County for them to say that you're allowing that, you know? So that light in the background also is an egress light.
I'm talking about the wall, I'm talking about the actual, these lights on the underside.
And they have to be on, they're egress lights. There has to be one light on the egress, on lights inside, always 24/7.
Not all of them.
Not all of them, that's true.
That's what I'm talking about.
So if we were to wire it so that one runs all the time and the others go on motion only, that would, would that be acceptable to everybody?
So inside, there has, there's egress lights as well that have to be on all the time.
So.
So usually, when you have an exit sign, there's always a light right above it that always stays on.
Yes.
One light. That's code.
Yeah, and I don't have any problem with it. I'm saying leave that on.
You don't want it, yeah.
Leave that on, I don't think he has a problem with it either. And then the remaining lights, we would put on the sensor so to ensure that.
The exterior lights, and the garage lights.
Yes.
We're fine with that, yes.
Aren't there also garage lights that, I mean, I don't see them in the parking garages all the time, where they are a, they are naturally a very dim level until they are motion-activated, and then they brighten? And that's, some of that is, it's in your LED lights, but it's an energy savings move that a lot of parking garages have shifted to. Is that an option here?
I'm not an electrician, but I would assume so, yeah. I mean, it wouldn't be hard to buy a, you know, install a low dim light. The LEDs, I think 1,500 is the smallest you can get it. The lights run easy on egress, they usually run 45, it's called lumens now. The LEDs off change, but yeah, that's something that probably could be done. But to make this point very clear to you, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have stairs going up, they have stairs going up as well.
Say that again?
The learning center, they have stairs that go into their building.
Right.
So we do not.
Okay.
So we would only have somebody drive, somebody, I mean, if a rabbit walked across the garage, it's obviously going to turn it on, but, yeah, so.
So you don't have, you know, stairs going from your garage up into your building?
No, we do not.
I was going to say, I didn't.
So we have the exterior stairs only.
Got it.
So it's a little different scenario, where we wouldn't really need as much light. But there still would be an egress inside that required by code. As far as the grading goes during construction, we always put up erosion control. I don't know what's there now, to be honest with you, but the goal always is to keep the grading, the water that's on the, you know, the main road, keep it on the main road, and the goal on our property is always to drain it on our property. There are at times where required, shared drainage is required between property lines. I don't, I think that's what you're referring to. But I honestly haven't seen what's back there yet, but, and I think the trees require berms, so if we put berms high, then it's obviously going to float to the property line. So I think that's, that's the issue really. You know, do you want to lower the berm and keep the trees high or keep the trees low? And then have a swell between the two property lines? That would be my only comment. Does that make sense?
If the trees are low in that setting, the soil would be too wet and the trees would die, so you'd want to keep the water away from them.
Okay. So another, another point that I like to make, it's, you know, construction code to keep silt out of the drainage, so there's, you know, we would put hay bales around it all to keep, to keep the, you know, silt out of the city water.
All right.
Very good, thank you very much. Anything else from the group? Very good, thank you very much. All right. I think that does it for our public hearing. We will adjourn until, it is currently 6:29. We're going to adjourn the public hearing, and we will reconvene at 6:45 for the CIC
It's 6:45, Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. I'd like to call the, uh, meeting to order for this annual meeting of the CIC members. Uh, first item on the agenda is the election of new members to the Board of Directors.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, add Jonathan Dieters to replace Mr. Porter on the CIC board.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Kellums, would you call the roll?
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Dieters. Welcome to the board. Uh, next item on the agenda is the election of officers. I would like to nominate, uh, Mr. Tom Weedman to serve as chairman of the CIC Board of Directors.
I'll second that.
Uh, any discussion? Mr. Kellums.
Mr. Dieters, aye. Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Mr. Kellums, aye.
Okay, let me take this over.
Okay.
All right, um, next, uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to nominate Tracy Schwegman as, uh, vice chair, or I guess we're going vice president under this, these terms, correct?
Correct.
Vice president?
I will second that.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Kellums.
Mr. Dieters.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Mr. Kellums, aye.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to, uh, I'd like to nominate, um, Mr. James as secretary of the CIC Board of Directors.
Second?
Any further discussion? Mr. Mr. Kellums.
Mr. Dieters.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Mr. Kellums, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to nominate Mr. Dieters as treasurer of the CIC Board of Directors.
Second?
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Kellums.
Mr. Dieters, aye. Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Mr. Kellums, aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to, uh, I'd like to make a, to nominate, uh, Mr. Kellums as our executive director of the CIC Board of Directors.
Second?
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Kellums.
Mr. Dieters, aye. Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Mr. Kellums, aye.
Okay. Our board is back in place. Uh, next item on the agenda is approval of December 6, 2022, CIC meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
I don't know if we approve those minutes.
Second?
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Kellums.
Mr. Dieters.
Aye.
Mr. Dieters wasn't there, then can he still vote on it?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Mr. Dieters.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Mr. Kellums, aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Economic Development Grant Program. Uh, so if you can see on our sheet, it looks like we have, uh, total liabilities and fund 97 to 91. Our total expenses were $31,613.08. So, we have a fund balance of $28,904.56. Is that correct?
Uh, actually, there, there was a slight change in that. The total expense is $32,202.54. So, we, so last year, 2022, our, our final numbers were $85,579.64, $82,480.14, so that was grants. So, we started off the year, uh, with a balance of $28,904.56.
Okay.
Added 100 grand to that. Uh, so, uh, this year so far, including expenses, it's been $32,202.54. So, our balance right now is $96,702.2.
Okay, so, um, the, that 32 to 202 includes the checks we just signed today?
It does not.
It does not?
It does not include today's.
Okay. Okay. How did that compare to last year, do you know? On grants?
On grants, uh, 2022, the total year was lower than 2021. The grants were $91,463. But I do not know how that compares with just January and February.
Okay.
But for the year 2022 was lower.
Okay. All right, anybody have any other, uh, questions? Okay, make a note that the, the date of our next meeting is June 6th at 6:45 PM. And if there is no other business, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I believe we adjourned.
I second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. We are adjourned.
Seven o'clock P. M., I'd like to call the regular trustee meeting of March seventh, two thousand twenty-three to order. If anyone could please rise for the invocation to this being given this evening by?
Myself.
Mr. Kellums.
Heavenly Father, we come together this evening to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us, Lord, in our deliberations, and help us to be wise in the decisions that we make here tonight. Give us insight to lead with integrity, Father. Grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
If you please remain standing, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dieters can note that all three trustees are present. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three trustee meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from February twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three trustee meeting.
And I'd like to second that motion.
Any further discussion? Mr. Dieters, would you call the roll?
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening?
Jeff.
Mr. Ucater, anybody sign in for the public? Public comment portion of our meeting?
There are two comments, but they were for the earlier portion.
Okay.
Are you good? Okay. Thank you. Planning and zoning report.
I do not have anything to add to tonight's meeting except for the resolution that we'll consider.
Okay, so that takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is the zoning case two thousand twenty-three dash zero one M. A., which we heard in the public hearing earlier this evening. Do we have any further discussion, or we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve case two thousand twenty-three dash zero one M. A. with the conditions set forth by the staff, as well as what I'd like to do is replace condition number five with a condition that reads, "All rear lighting and exterior and garage lighting will be on a motion sensor. However, one egress light will remain operational twenty-four seven in the parking garage." That would be replacement of number five from the staff report. I will be adding, I'd like to add, "Existing asphalt apron along Montgomery Road must be removed." And the last one would be, "Proposed project shall meet section three oh two point two of the Property Maintenance Code."
So do we have, and I guess I'm, next I'm going to be looking for a motion to, if you can scroll back there. There we go. Looking for a motion regarding resolution approving a major adjustment for eighty-eight ten Montgomery Road for Dr. Michael Hall, DDS, in Sycamore Township and dispensing with a second reading, as written with the given provisions as proposed by Mr. Weedman.
Motion.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Is that sufficient?
Yes. That works. It's a little convoluted, but, okay. Very good. Any further discussion?
I'll just note we had a public hearing earlier. It seems like this is a nice project, and it'll be a welcome addition to the neighborhood there, and seems to be amenable to the neighbors. So it'll fit nicely with the other structures that are going in on the site there, and we welcome you to that location once you get it done.
Mr. Weedman, any other comments?
Can I ask for clarification? Do you want all exterior lights motion?
All rear exterior lights. I think, I think it actually was worded to the east.
It's a.
East, okay.
All rear, eastern elevation.
Eastern elevation.
So the north lights, you want to stay on, and the pole light?
And it would include the garage lighting shall be on a motion sensor too.
Sure.
Okay, any further discussion?
I guess only to note, this wouldn't prohibit lights in the front from being turned off unless code requires them to be on though, right?
Yeah, they can stay on.
They can stay on, yeah, 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 they can stay on. The code looks at the foot candles, and the foot candles are compliant, you know, with the.
No, my question was, they can be turned off too, of course, right? The way that question was phrased and answered, it was as if it had to stay on all the time out front. We're not requiring that, correct?
The lights could, certainly could stay on.
Or they could be turned off.
Or they could be turned off.
Right, that was my question, yes.
I see, yeah.
Okay.
We're talking about the, on the.
Port side?
No, on the Montgomery roadside.
Okay.
We good? No further discussion. Okay. Mr. Dieters, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes, or resolution passes.
Welcome.
Welcome, welcome to Sycamore Township. Next item on the agenda, Sheriff's Patrol report.
I spoke to Lieutenant Tar earlier today. We have nothing to report.
Okay, all is well and right in Sycamore Township. EMS and fire report.
Just report, we have three part-time firefighters that have starting here very soon, and I got two more in the near future as soon as they graduate from school. So we're doing good on that. I do have, if anybody is in need of any COVID test, home test, I have some in at the firehouse if anybody needs any. We got some from the Health Department. And then the last thing is the fire truck that's been out for repair for God only knows how long is going to be done, it's done now, so we can, we're going to be picking it up in the next couple of days.
Exciting.
So that's good. That's all I have.
You have a question?
Chief?
Yeah.
So you said three part-time and two when they graduate. Does that include the part-timer that left from Deer Park?
No, so we're down one with them.
Okay.
Yeah. These are, these are just new guys that are out of school.
Okay, perfect.
Chief, also, would you like to talk about the turnout gear a little bit? We're going to, we have a P. O. tonight.
Yes, we have, we have a nucleus, a turnout gear that's well over a ten-year mark, and we had it inspected last year and are not. They failed the test, or they need so much repairs, cheaper to buy a new set. So the turnout gear that Mr. Kellums has tonight is to replace that, at those units.
Very good. All right, roads, maintenance, and recreation. Mr. Rude Schaffer.
Here goes some money.
Good evening. Got a full report tonight. Let's start with Parks and Rec report. Just like to make an announcement that most of our athletic field rental spots have been filled. As usual, we've been experiencing a high demand for our fields this season. Shelter rentals have been picking up. If you're planning on having an event, I would suggest reserving sooner rather than later. Roads report, Montgomery Road sidewalk project, Stewart Road to Ken Arbor are those limits. Construction is to begin April seventeenth. All the abutting property owners will be notified prior to construction. The Gideon Lane culvert improvement, we will have a bid opening March tenth, ten A. M., here at the township building. Get that project underway hopefully very soon. The Euclid Road sidewalk project, Hosbrook to Michael. There is a sort of grant signing ceremony tomorrow. I will be attending that, provide them the contract, signed contract that Mr. Kellums will sign. The estimated cost of the project is nine hundred and ninety-six thousand and thirty dollars. The grant is seventy percent sort of funds, which will equal about six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars that sort of will pick up. Townships will be responsible for thirty percent of the funds, which would be two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars. We will be posting on the township website tomorrow after the signing ceremony for R. F. Qs for engineering. Get that project.
Okay.
That's great.
Go on. East Kemper Road sidewalk project, Bain to Schneider Road, is currently in the early design phases. Projected construction date is twenty twenty-six on that. And then the last sidewalk project that I would like to report on would be the Bain Road, Deerfield Road sidewalk project, which is East Kemper Road to Schuler Park. We have finished the preliminary engineering, and I'm anticipating that we will be moving into design phase soon. That is all I have for reports. Have a couple resolutions. If you have any questions on the report, I'd be happy to answer them.
Steve, who did we, who did we fill in on the ball, the ball diamond up in Schuler? Who filled in the spaces that were, were being used by Moeller?
The, there's a couple teenage teams being filled in, and also I believe Moeller's JV is going to be using some of those dates as well.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Was that, was that, that teen one, was that the Bill Keen from All Saints?
I am not sure.
Okay.
I can check on it, though, and find out who, who we are filling that spot.
Okay.
Yep.
Steve, I've got a question too. I got some questions from some neighbors in Sturbridge about Bob Meyer Park and the playground and what our plans are for it there. I know we've been through some repair attempts we made on some things that were broken and somewhat obsolete.
Yeah.
I think we had some discussion of new equipment being planned at some point there. Can you give us an update on that?
Yeah, the, as you're aware, the, you know, some of the playground equipment, it was closed for a few months while we were trying to find some replacement parts. Those finally came in. The repairs were made. We're going to be trying to pursue some grant money and hopefully put some new equipment in up there. So it's kind of been in the discussion, design phase, so to say. So hopefully in the future we can get something going.
Very good. Thanks.
No other questions. Let's, I'd like to move to the resolutions. The first resolution I have for the trustees to consider is a resolution authorizing a contract for purchase of equipment for one 2023 Intimidator 18XP 18-inch drum style brush bandit and dispensing with a second reading.
Motion.
And I'll second the motion to approve the resolution.
You want to give us a little background on this, Steve?
Sure.
Jeff, could you, there should be something in the pack and if you could scroll.
There we go.
Keep going. Yeah, we should have a maintenance log.
Keep going. There you go.
There you go.
You can all read that, right?
With some binoculars.
Can I borrow your glasses?
Yeah.
So we purchased this brush chipper in 2008 and we, if you'll notice the last, I believe it was three, three years, we've started putting a considerable amount of money in it. Just in the past two years, almost $4,000 in maintenance. And the one thing I would like to add is out of all of our equipment, our brush chipping machine gets the most use. And I think I did mention this is a 2004 model, so with extremely high miles. So I think, you know, just this past week, I'll give you a good example. I think we responded to 30 storm damage pickups just in the past three days, so.
This is probably the most appreciated piece of equipment in the entire township.
Yeah, it probably is, so it does get...
Everyone cheers when it comes down their street.
Or the plow, or the snowplow.
It's a snowplow.
Yeah, so.
Are we looking at immediate delivery on this upon approval or is this the sort of equipment we have to wait three years for now?
Yeah, so that's a good question. I did ask the sales rep and they do have, I think he said 13 or 14 2023 models in stock. He suggested if we got it in by the end of March, we could secure a 23 model. If we waited any longer, the, would probably have to be a 24 model here. Yep, so.
Any further discussion?
No.
All right, Mr. Deeters, if you'd call the roll.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Okay. The next resolution for the board to consider, a resolution approving a contract for the 2023 Cape Seal Road Repair Project and dispensing with the second reading.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? I think this is the work we talked about, was it last meeting maybe?
Yes.
This was going to be coming?
Yep, so this, this is the project that Mr. Trustee Weedman referred to, which would cover about 20, 25% of the township. Streets will be affected by this project. And I believe I hit it broke out because you had a good question. How many were in the northern part of the township and southern part of the township? And if you look at the square yardage, 62,550 square yards up on the, in the south side and the north side, I think was about, yeah, 68,400. So pretty split.
That's great. Any further discussion? Mr. Deeters.
Mr. James.
Aye. Did we actually have a motion? Yeah, actually.
I thought we did. Did we not?
I think we, I made a motion.
I think you made a motion.
Start.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Law Director report.
Nothing to report from the law director.
Okay. Administrator report. Mr. Collins?
So first, I'd like to talk about Heightmeyer Electric. You know, we've been in touch with Chad Schaefer still back and forth. It was nice that, you know, we had a, quite a large storm last Friday. There was thousands of outages all across the county. And I know Heightmeyer did not go out. There was reports that it flickered. That is exactly what those switches that they put in were supposed to do. So they are doing the work. So, so far it's, it's been a good job by Duke and we continue to pursue that. Other than that, Kenwood Traffic Study has been completed. It is on our website. We will have a public meeting on that Tuesday, March 21st at 6:00, right here at the administration building. Letters to the businesses and residents that are on Kenwood Road throughout the whole project went out yesterday. So they should all be receiving those. That's also on our calendar and on our website that we'll be having a public hearing. So that, that will be interesting to see what comes of that.
Tracy, I had reached out to you at the end of last week also about getting a better copy of the report from TEC. Did you hear anything back from them yet? Some of the diagrams that were...
I do hear about that. I thought it had already been fixed. Have you checked again? I'll check tomorrow. I thought they had already done it.
No, if they replaced the PDF, I'll check their site then. Okay. Thanks.
The only other thing I have is a couple purchase orders over $5,000. So the first was the one the chief talked about, PO number 23-94 from Phoenix Safety Outfitters, the amount of $49,863.40. And this is for the fire department turnout gear. And 23-95 from Bushelman Supply for $29,612.33. This is for garage doors being installed on the North Salt Dome. Those are the only two POs that we have this evening.
I move we approve the purchase order list.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Deeters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Mr. Deeters, Fiscal Officer report.
Yes, we had cash receipts of $4,241,592.32. And we had disbursements of $382,533.40.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Deeters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Trustee comments?
I have a couple. First, I want to thank Stevie and the crew for, I know we had a lot of storm damages last week and you guys did a great job of cleaning. I got a number of calls saying what a great job you guys were doing. So good job on that. I did get a notice from somebody in Heightmeyer on Sunday that after the storm that they had a tree that was leaning towards the, towards the wires in the backyard. And I contacted Duke on Sunday and Monday they assessed it and I think, hopefully today, they took that tree down. So quick response by Duke to the Heightmeyer situation. We're fortunate that, as Tracy had suggested, that Heightmeyer did not lose power during this, during the storm this past week. So I think improvements are coming in Heightmeyer and we're happy that Duke is responding the way they are. So that's all I have.
I'll join in on that. There were Duke crews out in the neighborhood Saturday morning at about 7:30 AM in the yard next to mine looking at damage. It was great. The power just flickered, didn't go out. So things are making great progress there. I'll also add that this month is the 220th anniversary of the state of Ohio and if the history accounts I read are correct, the 220th anniversary of Sycamore Township as well. Sycamore Township was created in the first act of the Ohio Legislature after statehood in a meeting in, I think, March 24th in Chillicothe, when Hamilton County was chopped up basically because it used to encompass much of the southwestern part of the state. And Sycamore Township was apparently created in that act too. So happy 220th birthday, everyone. That's all I have.
Should have brought it. We should have had a birthday.
That's right.
I'll just comment that everyone should be watching their mailboxes. The hard copy of the quarterly newsletter should be hitting mailboxes soon. Thanks to everybody up here that contributed content and articles to, to that newsletter and thanks to the staff for all the work that they do to put that out. I think everybody will enjoy the mix of newsworthy items that are in this, this quarter's newsletter. Other than that, we have a special zoning commission meeting for general purposes scheduled for Wednesday, March 8th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the administration building here at 8540 Kenwood Road. As mentioned earlier, there is a bid opening later this week, Friday, March 10th, 2023, for the Gideon Lane Culvert Improvements. It's at 10:00 AM here at the administration building. On March 21st, we have several meetings scheduled, one of which is the Tax and Center Review Council meeting at 5:00 PM here at the administration building. A public hearing for a zoning case 2023-02Z also slated for the 21st here at 5:30. And then a public meeting here at the Township Administration Building at 6:00 PM for the Kenwood Traffic Study that was mentioned earlier as well. For all other scheduled meetings and events, please see the published calendar.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned at 7:24.